I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for October 21st, 2024. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
President.
Commissioner Banky.
Present.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Goss.
Present.
All commission members present.
At this time, we are going to give a proclamation to David Comfort, our Fire Inspector of the Year. Do you want all of them up there or just David or what would you like? Alright, so I will meet you at the front. You had them all here, so I wasn't sure. Congratulations. Whereas on October 3rd, 2024, Adrian firefighter David Comfort was recognized by his peers as the 2024 Fire Inspector of the Year. And whereas David has served the city of Adrian since 2000, becoming a certified fire inspector in 2017, and then promoted to Fire Inspector at the Adrian Fire Department. It's first ever dedicated position since its establishment in 1841. And whereas David with guidance from Chief Massengill, developed the fire inspection program the department now uses, conducting approximately 500 fire inspections over the last two years. And whereas outside of his work hours, David staffs an ALS ambulance on a fairly regular basis during the fall for local high school and collegiate football games. Now therefore I, Angie Sword Heath, Mayor of the City of Adrian, Michigan, do hereby recognize and congratulate David Comfort on his award of the 2024 Fire Inspector of the Year and thank him for his years of service to the city of Adrian and our community. Congratulations.
Thank Chief Massengill and Captain Springer. And this board that had the foresight to get an inspector for the city of Adrian. I've been reactive as a firefighter paramedic and still doing that. But now I'm being proactive and the best nine one one call is the one that doesn't occur. So, thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to take a picture up here? Do you want a picture up here with? Do you want a picture up here with? With the fire department or just you or alright? Okay, there we go. Alright, ready? One, two, three. I took a couple. One, two, three. Oh, that's a video that is not going to help you. Sorry. Alright, ready? One, two, three. There you go. Congratulations. We will now have public comment for the items on the agenda. So at this time, there will be a three minute time limit on the screen. And if you would like to address the city commission, please come up to the podium and state your name and place of residence. After we have exhausted all public comment inside the chambers, we will then open it up to the Zoom participants. But this is only for items on the agenda. We will begin now. Hearing no public comment inside the chambers, we will open it up to Zoom participants for items on the agenda.
Ken Tokars, Adrian, Michigan. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm calling in regards to the presentation about the Sam Buford Woodworking Institute. While I think that they do great things for the community, I don't think it's feasible or it's responsible of the Adrian City Commission to give away land to a non-taxable entity. I think there's other options that can be done. One is possibly giving them a piece of land inside of Heritage Park. But giving them a piece of land that could potentially become something that generates tax revenue for the city is the wrong decision to make. I've made comments before that that land could be used for a small housing development. So, you know, for small houses, maybe the city might have to kick in a million dollars for roads and stuff or some infrastructure to help out. I mean, you did it for the hospital, so why can't we do something for this property? You guys find grants for anything under the sun with the DDA, but you can't find anything for this property and you're just gonna let it go to something that's not gonna generate tax income. And then don't think that that's the route to go. The other thing is to give away land and to not inform the public or just have it on a note that someone has to look at the agenda is wrong. People should have known about this for months now and the city administrator should have put it in his weekly report so people had time to talk about it. Instead of just finding out about it last minute after you guys have made a decision. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment, I will now turn it over to our city administrator for our work-study session.
Thank you, Mayor. So as noted, our scheduled item tonight is a presentation from the Sam Buford Woodworking Institute regarding a proposal for acquiring a portion of the Whit Farm. Luke Barnett is here from Sam Buford and I'm going to turn it over to him. If you want to go up to the podium, Luke, and then we have your slideshow available to put up on the screens. You can kind of walk Michelle through the slides.
So I've also brought our architect Ray is on the Zoom call for, he's gonna lead a couple of the slides.
Hello.
Alright. So I'm gonna take this opportunity to give a brief history of the Sam Buford Woodworking Institute, talk about exactly what we do. Most people don't know. And then we'll talk about what we're seeking. We're actually seeking three things. We're seeking the purchase of some land on the Whit Farm property. We are seeking a resolution from the city that supports our state and federal grant requests and some type of proclamation to recognize Adrian as the fourth college in Adrian, which I think is really important because most people just know that there are three colleges in Adrian, but in fact, there are four. Okay, next slide. So we're just gonna go through 28 slides. This is the second. Luckily, I'll try to be quick. The last slide is Q and A time. Next slide. So the simplest way to understand what we do is that we are a college that trains people for careers in the forest products industry, which is in 2023, the forest products industry was estimated in Michigan by the DNR to be valued at $26.5 billion. That's more than the entire education budget and the cannabis industry combined. Next slide. So this is a brief history of what we've done. We started in 2017. And we started with a very small budget and it was a basically a one-man shop and we've grown every year since. We now have seven full-time employees, several part-time employees, and we contract with many employees and instructors who teach from throughout the world. Oh, so also we operate in two separate ways. So we have a college program that's a year long. Just think about traditional school starts in late August and goes till June. We also have continuing education courses. Our continuing education courses are about a five-day course typically. It'll be five to seven days. And people come from all over the world to take those courses with us. They sell out months ahead of time. And we can go to the next slide. So here's some key stats. And I've separated out from college program and continuing ed courses. Our college program, 25% of our graduates are female. We're only 4% is represented in the trade. 20 graduates last year. This year we have 24 students and hopefully they'll all graduate. We have a 100% employment rate for that class, which is that's incredible to have that kind of employment rate. I don't expect to get that every year, but we're pretty proud of that fact. So 80% of those students relocated to Adrian to take this from all over the United States. So they rent apartments here and the remaining typically drive here from Detroit, Ann Arbor, something like that. And 35% of our graduates are veterans. Now over to the continuing ed side. So we had 16 guest instructors. Those guest instructors come from all over the world. 214 traveling students who came here to take a five-day course. These students, our courses cost anywhere from $1,000 to $2,500. So we are bringing in people with disposable income into the community. They're captured here for six days at a time and they're spending money to live and learn in Adrian. So our college program is accredited through the ACCSC, recognized by the US Department of Education. And our continuing ed courses, about 90% of them are approved by the American Institute of Architects. Next slide. So this is just a quick org chart. Features are our board, me, some of our employees. There's program advisory committees and contractors that we work with and I just couldn't fit them all into the slide. Next slide, please. So the demand for our program is incredible. So we have 24 students this year and we turned down about 50 students. For the incoming class of, that'll start in August of 2025, we already have about 40 applicants. And so the supply, the demand is much more than we can supply. So we want to take that opportunity to grow it and train people for these jobs. Next slide. So we put together a plan. Over the next 20 years, we want to grow from 20 graduates a year to 200 graduates a year. And we'd like to do that in Adrian, Michigan. Next slide. You know, the whole goal is give young adults an opportunity. I don't want to say an alternative education because it's not an alternative education so that they can live happy, healthy and sustainable and become assets to their community and society. And for many kids, this is a much better pathway than traditional college. Next slide. So we are attracting students to this by acting as a traditional college. So if you take a moment and pause and think about your favorite memories from college, that is exactly why students choose to go to college rather than go to trade school. And so we're offering those opportunities to create those memories in a trade school environment. And it's working. It's working. Next slide. So we're gonna do that by going from a single building. This is currently our building. We originally got into this building by the generosity of the Adrian City Commission back in 2015, where they leased it to us for a couple of years for a dollar. Very generous. They took a chance on us and it worked. Next slide. And grow to a residential campus. This is an overhead view of Adrian College. Next slide. And offer all those things that create memories that trade schools aren't offering. So places to gather, social spaces, student housing, et cetera, et cetera. Next slide. Okay. So an important part of our plan is that we need to create this opportunity and attract students. Jeff Docking used the strategy of sports to attract students to Adrian College and it worked. And a lot of people thought he was crazy, but when we look on back on that 15 years later, he's in fact done everything that he said he was gonna do. Doubled enrollment. Now, when I look around at our students, I don't see athletes. Our students are attracted to outdoor recreation, being in the woods, riding bikes, walking trails, all that good stuff. So we've identified a place that we think will work for this project. Next slide. Again, this is our short-term goals and long-term goals. Five years, we want to be at 50 graduates per year, 150% increase and 20 years, we want to be at 200 graduates. Next slide. So we believe that the phase one development will be about $12 million. It'll create 12 full-time jobs. Yep. Next slide. So I've been working on this plan for a long time. And all the steps in green that you see on the slide have been completed and they were very difficult. Accreditation, association with the VI, so VA, so that students can use the GI Bill, ensuring our operational funding and maxing out our current capacity at where we're at. Now, being accredited through the ACCSC, that's a big deal. And what that means is Title IV funding. And to remind everybody what that is, if you're unfamiliar, Title IV funding is where students can use the Pell Grant. They can get any federal student aid that they need to attend our school, lowering the cost barriers and open it up to a lot more people and a whole new demographic. Right now, it doesn't help us at all because we can't take any more students. So our plan, in order to move to the next steps, I'm focused on three things. Site selection, campus design and securing funding. Campus design, we put together a diverse committee to, of young people and students to select the architect. And the architect that we're working with is the Collaborative and Ray Mitchum. And I actually think he's gonna go through the next few slides to discuss land use and exactly how we're gonna use it.
Alright. I don't know if it would be easy to put the, my screen, I can see the camera in the room, but I can't see the presentation except for very small on the wall, but I do my best. We, at the Collaborative, a lot of you know us. We do a lot of work in Lenawee County. What you might not know is that our deepest market is higher education. And one of our areas of specialty that really takes us farthest is working with higher education institutes and doing campus master planning. And we've done a lot of work at Adrian College. We've done a lot of work at Sienna Heights. But we've really done projects all over the country with various colleges. I can see, thank you. And so having done almost 100 master plans, one thing that everywhere we go, people tell us that if they would have known what they, you know, where the college was gonna go in terms of growth when they first started, they would have thought about land and development differently. And, and a lot of colleges run out of space and have to cross roads and acquire new land. So what we try to say is even though it's hard to see out past 15 or 20 years, try to, try to, you know, project to the greatest degree you can because, you know, in, you know, 50 years, somebody's still gonna be running that campus and, you know, doing their best they can, going through changes and trying to accommodate growth. You know, Luke has worked with us. We've looked at his program and his 20-year vision. And that is accommodating 200 students and a dozen different programs. And that, that may be spot on in 20 years that, that, you know, maybe it's bigger, maybe it's smaller, but it's, it's hard to anticipate. And the, the first proposition that was offered was the possibility of the acreage, the wooded acreage that is alongside of the River Raisin and then sits in the back of, of the fields that are out on M52. And that was about 13 acres. And as we, you know, built the program and looked at square feet required and parking required and infrastructure. And we did do some research. There's some GIS data that suggested there might be some wetlands back there. We became fairly concerned that that site might not be enough to, to get the full vision. Or if it was, we might end up, you know, in a bit of a compromised layout and probably clearing a lot more trees than, than we'd really like to. So and we'll, we'll show that plan here in the next slide. But what we're suggesting is, and we understand that the city of Adrian would like to preserve a lot of that property out on M52 for future development use, commercial, retail, by taxpaying entities. And so what we've tried to do is eat into that as little as possible, leave as much of that as possible for, for future development by others. But, but we feel that getting to a little over 21 acres and capturing the south end of some of that open field really is, is needed to get, you know, to feel confident that we can fulfill the, the vision for the college. That would still leave 40 acres approximately for, for future development that is, you know, clear and developable. And if you could go to the next slide. So the, the plan we came up with, and this is, this is very preliminary, but there's about a dozen different programs. You know, carpentry, timber framing, chair making, spiral stairs. And each of these programs really would want its own workshop area for that group of 20 to 24 students to get in there and, and have tools and space to lay out and, and call their own for that program. So, and then, you know, you have all the, the support stuff, the administrative offices, some kind of a commons, restrooms, mechanical space. So that, that's approaching 70,000 square feet of space. And, you know, as Luke mentioned, you know, his students are not necessarily athletes. There are people that like to work with wood and like to be in the woods. So the ideal development of this campus is one in which we try to go in and work around some of the better trees that are, that are in that forest. And it really is a lovely woodland area. So we would suggest that, you know, a survey be done and some of the better trees identified. And we would try to lay out this, this campus as a series of expansions in building pods. And that the parking would be pushed as far to the, to the west is practical. Entry could come through the ILISD property, which might be the most economical and easiest way to do it. The LISD is supportive of that notion. Over the long run, it might make more sense to come in off of a road off of M52. And this is sort of an early study and Mr. Elliott let us know that, I guess there's been a road that's been designed back there. So we can certainly, you know, amend this plan to work around that road. But, but this is where we're at now. There is a pretty steep drop-off down the hill toward the river. And we're keeping the buildings back a safe distance from that. So we don't have to get into real premiums with the foundation. But get a PUD and have adequate setback from the property line. We're asking if that property line can creep down the hill a little bit farther from what was originally suggested. The last thing, the little H-shaped yellow building footprints that are at the south side of the property would be residences. Because, you know, as Luke mentioned, these students really and part of what the, the value proposition here is that these are students that are looking, learning woodworking, but they're getting a residential campus experience. All that important life experience and meeting young people and sharing ideas and, and sharing life, you know, for a couple of years out of college when you're trying to get your head together and your feet underneath you. That's very important for college students and, and this campus would really offer that sort of an experience to, to students that traditionally, you know, didn't, didn't get that opportunity. So, so really exciting kind of vision. Next slide. Is Luke mentioned we're, excuse me, doing a site evaluation for two sites. And one is here in town. Excuse me. Clear my throat. Doing some woodworking myself today and got sawdust down my lung, so sorry about that. This, this campus in Adrian has all kinds of opportunities. And I think the potential partnerships with Adrian College or Sienna Heights, the LISD, Jackson, you know, proximity to the downtown and all the kind of exciting, you know, restaurants and hangout spots for students. Adrian is rapidly becoming, you know, kind of an educational center in Michigan. And this, this, this college, this woodworking college would further enhance that. We are looking at a site in Tecumseh and it, it just, you know, it's, it's plenty of land and it's beautiful land, but it does not have those kinds of important potential partnerships and proximities that could really make this a very, you know, an enhanced rich experience for students and an ability to, to maybe partner with the other colleges and have perhaps a pipeline of students coming out of the LISD. So that's exciting. Next slide, please. I think we had some slides in here. I won't dwell on this. I already mentioned that we, you know, our, our office has got planners, landscape architects, architects. And so, you know, we've got Manikin Smith on board to help us with the, the site analysis and civil engineering and structural and MEP support. I don't need to dwell on that. We could move to the next slide. But some of these things and some of these, you know, slides are from our interview that we had a couple of months ago. We, we understand, you know, how important it is for this college to build these buildings in the trees and have that strong connection to nature. Next slide. Outdoor spaces, you know, is, is incredibly important. You know, the, the stuff, the paths, the green spaces, the places to build community in between buildings. And so we very much have a vision for that on this site. Next slide. And in a central campus green where the community can, can come together. That's, that's it. Last thing, I mean, it, there, the, we have a little bit of a challenge here. A sense of arrival at college and a campus gateway is, is very important. Adrian College, you know, Jeff Docking really wanted to see an entrance off of M52 and put an archway out there just to announce Adrian College's presence. We would really appreciate the opportunity to explore some kind of gateway out on M52, some kind of signage that would announce the college's presence back there. But, but we can get into those discussions a little further down the road. I think the important thing today is to really focus on uh, the, on, on, on the initial property. Next slide.
So the, I have estimated based on case studies that the twenty-year strategy is going to cost about forty million dollars. And the phase one strategy should be about twelve million dollars. So we're going to seek that funding, um, through any way possible, federal, state, um, local investors and financing as well. And we've been working at all those levels, um, with great, great success. Next slide. Okay, Q and A. Forty million dollars.
So commissioners, uh, this would be your opportunity to discuss and, and ask questions of, uh, Luke, as he might have.
So currently, um, how, how many students do you bring in to Adrian?
Uh, so through our college program, we have twenty-four students right now. And I think we've had two hundred and ten through our continuing ed so far this year, plus our weekend classes, which is about three fifty, if I remember correctly.
And then that, so you bring in that number of students and the college students, it, it's a year-long program and they, that they live relatively somewhere in Lenawee for the most part?
Absolutely. Yep. Uh, so right now they're just renting apartments, just, um, just like any normal person would do. And they're staying here for a year and we're trying to keep them around if, if we're so lucky.
And your title four funds, um, when, when did you receive that accreditation?
Uh, August fourteenth.
This year. Okay. So, um, so then that only helps to bring in and attract more students.
Absolutely.
I guess one of the things with, uh, it like teacher training, I know it was always difficult for that, um, industrial arts type teacher, that vocational certification. So does this provide the year of like vocational training and then they go to Western or Central or something like that, or, or Adrian and pick up their teaching endorsement?
Yep, absolutely. So we're currently getting ready to sign an articulation agreement with Western as a matter of fact. Um, where students who graduate from our program will have one year done and then go on to Western and take the remaining three years and then get whatever degree or certification they need to become a vocational instructor in Michigan. And from, and from what I understand, the remaining three years can actually be done online to earn that.
So I, um, I guess when, uh, Angie, the mayor and I were there for the Moriama Exchange Tour, uh, I found it interesting because we struck up a conversation with two of your students, one from Mexico City, one from Newark, New Jersey, um, which I thought was kind of surprising. What, what's your pull? What are you bringing in?
Uh, from, you mean geographic?
Yeah, geographically.
All over the world, um, Mexico City, Sweden, France. Um, it's unbelievable. I, I can't believe it either. When somebody from a different country signs up to come to Adrian to take a course with us, but all over the world.
And then, um, last question I have for a minute. So, uh, I heard the T word, um, Tecumseh. Um, are we competing with other municipalities besides that? Or what's your timeline from us or your hope from the commission as related to staying in Adrian or relocating to a different municipality?
Yeah, uh, that's a great question. So, um, I would like to be moved into the phase one building with our college in four years. And that might seem like a lot of time that, but that means we got to get going now. There's design time, bidding phase, construction. And yes, we are considering a, a spot in Tecumseh as well.
And, uh, last thing, funding. So twelve million, uh, for phase one, what pledges or commitments do you have or, um, working with, um, Senator Bolino's office or any other offices?
Yep. So we have pledges for four point one million dollars so far. Um, that's through private foundations, private conversations. And we are also working with Bolino's office, Wahlberg's office, several state departments, including the DNR, LEO, um, MyLeap, uh, all very supportive of this. And, uh, this is a desperate need in Michigan. Uh, fifty percent of our landmass is covered by forest products. So, uh, here, here's a fun fact. The Michigan DNR Forestry Department is the only government agency that's completely self-funded. And that's through the sale of, uh, wood, forest products. So they're always looking to build this industry even more. Um, export the wood to different states and increase our economy here.
For full transparency, what exactly then are your ask of the city of Adrian?
Yep. So we would like an option to purchase that land. We would like a resolution that's from the city that, and that supports our state and federal funding requests and some type of proclamation to recognize us as the fourth college in Adrian. Our goal is to start, um, getting that into the regular vocabulary of people in Lenawee County. And that's going to take a long time. But I think a good place to start is with the city of Adrian.
When you say purchase, has there been conversations related to that?
There have been conversations, but I'll let Luke, uh, um, put his offer out there for you.
Yeah. So, uh, the wooded, so there's about twenty-two acres, about eighteen of acres of that is wooded and four acres is farmland. Um, so we would like to purchase the wooded area for one dollar and the remaining four acres of farmland for a price as determined by the commission.
And is that the area that, um, your architect spoke about with concerns about foundations and steep, uh,
Yes.
so along the river?
Yep. So, so some of that acreage in the eighteen of forested area is on the ridge. The architect pulled us down about halfway down that ridge, um, in order to give us a little leeway on setbacks. Um, yeah.
So you're asking for twenty-two acres for one dollar?
Uh, I'm at, I'm asking for eighteen acres of the wooded area for one dollar and the remaining four acres, a price to be determined by the commission. I would accept a dollar for that too.
So the, the discussions were that, you know, the, as, as you get in, as we've tried to market this land to uh, for economic development purposes, what we've been trying to market is the cleared land, the farmland. We, there was a prior, uh, proposal to use some of this land. Some, some of you may remember by the Humane Society. And the discussion by the city commission at that time was, well, the woods, you know, we never really contemplated selling the woods. So you could have the woods, but the, um, development part, because you're a nonprofit, you're going to have to pay what we deem to be market value for that. At, at that time, the city commission pegged that number at eight thousand dollars per acre. I mean, I will tell you that I've had offers on that land. They didn't come to fruition. I've had offers on that land in the past, uh, for twenty thousand dollars an acre. So I, I think that's more the, the market number, but you know, your, your precedent, if you will, was, uh, to sell the, the upland or the farmland for eight thousand dollars an acre. Now that was probably forty, or almost five years ago.
What was Mammoth's deal?
Mammoth was a dollar, but Mammoth was going to build millions of dollars of tax base, which was distinction with Mammoth. Of course, that didn't come to fruition either.
Right. Yeah.
The, the user I'm talking about was a senior living facility that was interested in the land. It's north of the outlets there, but, uh, it kind of fell apart when MDOT wouldn't let them have direct access to M fifty-two in that location.
Have you, uh, talked to any local universities or colleges about an articulation agreement with them outside of Western?
Uh, yes, I have. Actually, I included a, a letter from Jeff Docking. I think it was in the packet that kind of outlines what we're working on there. Uh, yep. So Adrian College. And, uh, we're working with Sienna Heights as well. We're a little further along with Adrian College though.
Just to be clear, this will be a nonprofit, correct?
It is a nonprofit. Yep.
Can I ask the city administrator to clarify what that, you know, the resolution to support funding looks like and, and how that affects us?
Well, of, of the, you're referring to the funding resolution as opposed to the educational institution ed, you know, and I don't think there's any concern with the, uh, resolution related to it being designated as, that recognized as an educational institution. Funding you have to, you think long and hard about i- in terms of going out there to the legislature. I, I would say particularly the state legislature and saying that this is a priority for you because we have other asks, uh, that we make from time to time of the legislature and uh, we will have other asks in the future. And so you have to, have to weigh those two things. The, the timing may be somewhat different, but you know, we have an election in two weeks and you're going to have the same legislature for the next two years. So, they will, they will remember all the asks you make of them during that period of time. I, I think that's what you have to consider.
And I would think Senator Bolino's, Senator Bolino's and not in Tecumseh.
Uh, no, that's Senator Jeff Irwin. We've also had meetings with him as well.
And regardless of the city of Adrian's, uh, request for funding, has it been positive from state organizations?
It's been positive from everybody.
Okay.
Yeah, overwhelmingly positive.
Say positive, do you mean like they're earmarking money?
It's a yes.
Okay.
Everybody. Yeah.
So they're saying that there's funding available, they're endorsing or giving you a dollar amount or?
They are.
Okay.
So, so where are your greatest hurdle at this moment?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm trying not to show all my cards, Kelly.
So I, I agreed, but four point one million covered private investors. Um, the other eight is you're, you're looking at federal, state funding, municipal funding, things like that. You're still collecting from, you're still looking for other, um, private investors, things like that.
Correct. It would, it would be a combination of all those. Yeah.
And then is it possible for someone, so, and I'm just going to try to describe an articulation agreement. But I might be wrong. So correct me if I'm wrong. Um, is it something that, you know, someone going to Sienna Heights already, someone going to Adrian College or Jackson College, they can then in, in an articulation agreement, is that, that they can get college credits from you while they're going to those schools too? So, uh, Commissioner Banky talked about teaching, for instance. Someone's going to Adrian College or Sienna Heights for teaching. Does this allow them to get their credits potentially while they're doing that? Or maybe in the summers they're taking some classes or I'm just, you know, does that coincide with that as well?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, so yeah, that's exactly what an articulation agreement is. And the easiest way to understand it is a traditional four-year college, whoever we have an articulation agreement with, um, they would come one year to us and three years to that college. And, um, so we're working with the state of Michigan right now on a program, um, that our institution is going to be piloted at. And what they do is they come and analyze the program. And rather than just giving out thirty elective credits, they're going to say, no, this program is worth four math credits, six English credits. So those credits actually have more value at the institutional level.
I, I think with, um, you know, Jackson College pulling out and being more of a online presence and not a boots-on-the-ground presence like Sienna and Adrian is, to have this as the opportunity to take that third, um, spot as more students and enrollment. Uh, when we think of the hundreds of students taking these classes, I'd much rather have them take classes here than in Tecumseh or, you know, the, the woodworking industries in Grand Rapids and Holland. So I can only imagine that they would be happy to take you with open arms, um, just as hopefully we can keep you here at, uh, at the same time. So I, I think, I think it's great. And from every aspect that you said with Senator Bolino's office, I know that he was able to put his money where his mouth was with, uh, the East Side, uh, Center that opened up with fifteen million dollars there. And I hope he can fund you for more.
Luke, can you quickly share a couple, just for people online and, and, and the audience, some of the accomplishments you've done? And I know, for instance, Notre Dame, um, the staircase. Can you share some of those specialty things that when I think woodworking, I think somebody's building me a cabinet for my kitchen, right? What is, what is, what is so eccentric and powerful about SBWI?
Yeah, that's a great question, Kelly. Yep. So, um, the forest products industry is very broad and most people don't realize it. So how many things are made out of wood? Look around this room right now. It's mostly made out of wood. The framing, the trim, everything. And, uh, staircases, boats, guitars, um, timber frame homes. Uh, so the, the biggest accomplishment is where our students go to work and, and that's what I think. So our students are going to work for very high-end employers, uh, mod interiors out of Detroit. So they do the work for the Detroit Pistons. All, everything that you see on the interior of Detroit Pistons that's made out of wood was done by them. Uh, Vogue Furniture, um, uh, you know, they're doing work for Dan Jennifer Gilbert, uh, et cetera, et cetera. So our students are in such demand, we had a, recently had a company reach out to us from Massachusetts, a very high-end woodworking company. They're going to fly out here and interview our students. And then any students that makes it to the second round, they're going to fly those students to Massachusetts and back just so they can get more. That's how, how short the industry is on these skilled workers. And we're providing them right here in Adrian, Michigan.
Um, one thing I don't think I've ever asked in all of our conversations. You know, I, we've talked about the, you know, traditional college students with the, with the year program. But by moving to this location, if you were to move to this location, do you foresee your, um, um, continuing ed or those adult education classes? Like I know when I was out there with Commissioner Banky, you had people from all over the country that were learning, um, to how to make chairs. Um, and, you know, they were from everywhere. And I know that you get a lot of people that come in for like a week long class, a two-week class, and they rent, um, Airbnbs in town and they eat at our restaurants and, um, cause I've run into them around town. But I'm just wondering, will that also increase, um, as well?
Absolutely. That's part of the plan. One of the things that we're really excited for phase one, right now, our college program runs for the entire year. And I don't, whoever's been out to our space, we're very limited. We can only cram so many bodies into that space. So most of our continuing ed courses happen during the summertime when the college program isn't running. When we build these new facilities, we'll be able to run the continuing ed courses year round. And I, I mean, I don't want to speculate as to how much is going to increase. I think I gave a very conservative estimate and, uh, the KPIs earlier. I'll say conservatively, I think it's going to double at least in phase one.
Okay. So lots of great things. And, uh, Luke, you know, I love you, support you. I'm in full transparency, I built a kitchen table out there with Luke's help. Love it. Absolutely love it. Some things we do need to think about though, as a commissioner, this is in the smart zone of the LDFA. Does this fit within the boundaries of what is in our smart zone? It is supposed to be capturing tax dollars. Luke's business is a nonprofit. Now, we can, you know, go against what the smart zone was built for and allow this to go through, or at least an option to go through. But I want people to know that the reason for that smart zone was to capture tax dollars and new development. Is that my understanding correct?
Yeah, that's right. Um, now I would say that to the degree it's in the woods, as I said before, we hadn't really had that in our contemplation.
Correct. So that's one thing to keep in mind. Another thing to keep in mind is the city of Adrian has believed in you twice before. We've allowed you to buy another piece of land for a dollar. We've let you lease the current building for a dollar and now you're coming to us again wanting more land for a dollar. We have believed you in you in the past and you've proved that, you know, that it's gone well. Um, and now you want to expand. So I just want people to know, full transparency, that has happened in the past. So we need to be aware that there might be other businesses out there that want us to believe in them too and offer opportunities that we have offered Luke's business. Okay? Saying all of that, again, I fully support alternative education. I've been, I've worked for six colleges and universities. Um, I understand accreditation. I looked you up, actually contacted them, got some more information. Uh, this is what I, this was all in my wheelhouse of what I did in my previous career. You can get college credits for your um degree, certificate, diploma. And many, many universities are going that route. Um I think that we need to be um cautious with taxpayer land, taxpayer money, but we also need to take chances and try and give uh entrepreneurs the option to grow. And I see Luke as an entrepreneur that I don't want to lose to the place with the T to the north of us that I refuse to say. Right now, all we're looking for um and it's not tonight since it's not on the agenda, but is an option. It's it's the opportunity that if if he can actually raise the funds that in, you know, for the opportunity, the option and I, you know, to buy this land from us. And with with parameters, as my understand how options work, you would have to have, you know, two years or something to to raise the funds or whatever we come up with or whatever Greg and our attorney comes up with, I'm not exactly sure. So it's 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 believing in an entrepreneur in the city of Adrian and wanting to keep them there. So that's where I'm at, is that I would like to give you the option of time saying, we're gonna set aside this land. Hopefully, everything will, the stars will align and everything will work out. But everyone needs to know the history of what has happened in the past, too.
Luke, have you had anybody in in your, and I know you've been working on this for a long time and talking about this for a long time. Have you had anybody? And in full transparency, we haven't always seen eye to eye. So um have you have you had anybody reach out to you and say that, you know, in their other property around there? Are there any maybe for-profit businesses that are interested in coming? And you know, I'm and I'm just spitballing, okay? It's like someone's gonna open up a store that's gonna sell some of the craft work and that's maybe for profit to engage your students more or just, you know, I I I'm food court, whatever. Is there, has anybody had conversation with you about like, hey, this is a really great asset? And here are some things we can bring to the table as well. Does that make sense?
It does make sense. And that that's a great insight. So to answer your question, no, nobody has contacted specifically because I tried to keep this all under wraps until tonight. Um, and my dream would actually be that our graduates from our program uh start little factories right around us, right there, building cabinets, a timber frame shop, um right there on that site. And actually, the wood products industry is identified in the uh Adrian Tecumseh Smart Zone area as one of the top five priorities for businesses moving in.
Just to clarify, I'm asking the city administrator to clarify. Um, can you just clarify the smart zone into, are you saying that the because I know we had this conversation quite a few months ago when when you came and came to us and you were wanting more of the farmland. Is it just the farmland that basically falls into that or does the wooded area fall into it? Since it's not really a developed area, I'm asking because I don't actually know because the plan has changed since we first talked about it.
Yeah, I don't know. It to to be honest, um because like I said, we never really contemplated development on the wooded part of the site so much. Uh, and of course, yeah, the the development of that TIF plan predates me, but we'd have to go back and look at the map um to to be sure. I I don't know, as I said, certainly the farmland is within the smart zone, but I don't know about the woods.
When the um Humane Society was being considered for that property, they're nonprofits. So how would that been different than a school as a nonprofit?
Yeah, as I recall, and I'd only been here a few months when they first came to the city commission uh uh back in the day, um that now that topic never came up at the time, other than what I said, but uh the commissioner at the time said, well, you're you don't pay taxes, so you gotta pay something for the land.
Yeah, that that was the case that they were, we had someone had suggested a price. I'm not exactly sure how they got to that price, but they were going to be required to purchase ten acres of of land at a certain price and then other wooded acres would be at a dollar.
But but it is permissible.
It is permit, any, we, yeah, we can do it. It's just, does it fit within the the parameters of a smart zone? I guess.
Right. Yeah, I I mean, there is a plan um like Luke Luke referenced for what that is intended to attract in addition to the the uses of that tax capture and that is that it's intended to throw off. Uh, but the the land isn't restricted in a way that you can't use it you know, for a nonprofit institution.
What would be the, what would be the projections? So if we gave, you know, we were talking about um taxable land, what would be the projections whether we give up this taxable land to what the actual tax, the potential for tax and growth would be with the people coming in? Revenues and things like that. Is anybody have any idea what the balance of that would be?
You, can you say that a different way?
Okay, if we give, it's gonna cost them a hundred thousand dollars in in taxes to the city. But they're going to bring in more people up to what you said, two hundred?
Uh, two hundred college students and who knows how many continuing ed.
What's the benefit of that revenue? I know it's not taxes that we acquire, but the taxes that they would pay at other things and the places they would visit, potential building inside the city of Adrian.
Yeah, I I mean, I think the the goal of that property is to throw off positive economic impact. And there's different ways that you can look at that. You could look at it through property taxes, you could look at it through jobs, or you could look at it as you're suggesting through other uh economic factors such as, you know, disposable income being spent within the Adrian economy. And I don't know, I I I certainly don't have numbers uh to suggest to you about what that might be, but I do think that's a legitimate consideration. But if if there, if you believe that there is going to be a knock-on effect, uh positive knock-on effect to the overall economy because of dollars being spent through people visiting the college or staying at the college, uh and spending the money in the community. But but that's a legitimate consideration.
Here in Adrian already, so why not build the shop? Why not sell the um the materials as well and create a nice little enclave there?
Yeah, that's that's true for any college, right? Being a college town and, you know, I, as you know, I lived in Ann Arbor for years and years, and many people complained about the the university buying up more land because they didn't pay taxes. But you know, anybody who understands the economy up there understands the positive impact of the University of Michigan on the economy of Ann Arbor. It's it's by far, it far outweighs whatever property taxes are lost because they don't pay taxes on the land they own.
A quick note about University of Michigan. So the first graduating class from the univers- University of Michigan was seven graduates. The same with the Sam Buford Woodworking Institute.
Yeah, I was gonna say, how's your football team doing this year?
I just want you to tell the Notre Dame story. Real quick, because I think
She tried to get you to do it.
I don't think people realize how huge that is. I I we, I already told you you need to market it more, but please tell everybody about it.
Yeah, so uh the Notre Dame story, and actually, uh, we just raised that in downtown Ann Arbor three days ago. Um, so we worked with um uh a group, okay, two thousand nineteen, Notre Dame Cathedral burned. Uh, when they were reconstructing the cathedral, there was two modes of thought, build it with modern construction techniques or build it with traditional construction techniques. The thought was that by the French government, that uh workers did not have the traditional skills to build it the same way. So two groups, one in the United States and one in France. Uh, the French uh group called Carpenters Without Borders or some French name that means that. And then in the United States, Hans House Studio, they said, we're gonna prove you wrong. So uh cut down trees, cut it, uh reconstructed it, um raised it. The architect from um the lead architect of the Notre Dame project came over, inspected the truss. Ultimately, uh, the French government decided, we do have the skills, we're gonna build it in the traditional way. So we helped with that project, that Notre Dame Cathedral Trust, we raised it out at the Plainway Campus on Father's Day in twenty twenty-three as a public exposi- exposition, exhibition. And uh we also had a one-tenth scale model that's traveled around to uh MIT, Georgia Architecture School, and each school has built a a few of the trusses, and our school has built some of those trusses. Well, actually, just last week, uh in Ann Arbor, um, we did it at the Ann Arbor Art Center right in downtown. This is a massive trust. Um, I can't believe we pulled it off, but we did.
When you're saying trust, you're saying the big arches of that build the cathedral of Notre Dame.
Correct. Yep. Yep. And so this was kind of the brainchild project of Rick, Rick and Laura Brown of Hans House Studio, and we got the opportunity to work with them on it and and bring it here to Adrian, Michigan. Yeah, thank you.
Commissioners, further discussion on this? All right. So I I think we can try to work on uh the structure of uh of a land deal that we can bring back uh for your further discussion, maybe. But we've, we kind of, Jay and I have kind of outlined something already. Uh, so we'll try to flesh that out and bring it back for you to look at. Uh, maybe at your next meeting.
Sorry, I thought I heard someone at the back door. No one there.
Okay. Thank you, Luke.
All right.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, the commissioners have other items for the work session. Okay, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
May I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Support.
Sorry. I have a motion from Commissioner Banky with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to the consent agenda, may I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to ordinances. Ordinance number twenty-four dash zero zero three is the second reading and consideration of an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances, chapter ten, Buildings and Building Regulations, by amending article five of that chapter, Vacant Buildings. May I get a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved. Support.
We will have public comment tonight since this is an ordinance and that is how it is set up. So at this time, if anybody would like to give public comment related to this ordinance, you may do so at this time. You will be under the three-minute time limit, and for the record, please state your name and place of residence. If anyone online would like to give public comment to this, you may do so at this time. Hearing no public comment, are there any commissioner comments? We have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
And Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Commissioners, you have miscellaneous reports in your package. Are there any questions or comments on those? So now we will move on to our general public comment. We will start inside the city chambers first. Just to reiterate, there's a three-minute time limit, and for the record, please state your name and residence. And when we have exhausted all comments within the city chambers, we will then open it up to the Zoom participants.
Good evening, Gary Pickle, President of Adrian. Um, I stand tonight in opposition to the point-of-sale ordinance. Um, I've been up here before and I want to re-recover some things that uh uh I've recently learned. I had an opportunity to speak with a couple of commissioners over the last week and a half. Um, also did a tour around the Adrian area looking at blight. Um, I one hundred percent agree that we have a blight issue in the city of Adrian. Um a majority of the the properties that I saw on the tour were rental properties, not residential, that we could tell. Um, I think the point-of-sale ordinance, although the intent is there, I understand it. But I think we're going about it the wrong way. I think we need to look at other opportunities. There are other ways to solve this problem without legislating a blight-free city. Um, I don't think that's gonna benefit the city of Adrian at all. Uh, I think it's gonna be detrimental to those who can't afford to fix, can't afford to stay, elderly, can't afford to do the work themselves. I think there's other alternatives out there, and I think we need to explore that before we go ahead and start legislating a blight-free city. Thank you.
Heath Miller, Adrian, um, about that land acquisition. It's our, it's our money, it's our tax money that paid for that land. You guys do what you're gonna do, you're gonna do it regardless of whatever we say. But I would like to see it if you decide to give that land away that at least fifteen percent of the enrollment that goes to that college is from the city of Adrian. That's no more than right that the city of Adrian students should be able to go to that institute. It's no more than right. It's at least, that's at least that institute could do for what we're giving them. Um, handicap parking. You got handicap parking out here by the post office, but there's none down here on the city streets. If you want handicap parking, you have to be out there in the behind the crosswell. I had to walk from almost the four corners to find a parking spot. That's not fair. That's not right. There should be handicap parking at least two or three in front of and each block, but there's no handicap parking on none of these streets. Where is that fair to anybody that's disabled? I know I'm speaking on deaf ears because I I keep complaining, 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 and I just get blank looks from everybody here. I walked with Mr. Schwartz. He outwalked me by a hundred miles an hour. And he had to slow down to keep walking with me. But I had, like I said, I had to walk through from almost the four corners to get here. Because that's where I found a parking spot I could park at. It's not fair and it's not right. And if I parked in the back parking lot, that's even a further parking spot. And if I have to walk through the back door, now that means I have to walk all over. And if I have to walk through the back door, now that means I have to walk all the way around here to come in. There's no handicap accessible entrance in the front, which I think is actually against the Disability Act, because you have no parking back there. And there's no parking out here. So where is this fair? Where, if this was a store in a parking lot, you'd make sure they had an accessible entrance and parking spots for them. What's, what's the difference here? There is no difference. There's plenty of storefronts down here, but none of them have to have parking spots for handicapped. Like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm talking to deaf ears, but nobody wants to do anything.
Hi, I'm Mark Bars, I live in the city of Adrian for forty-five years. I just got a couple of questions to ask. When a telephone pole falls down, how many days or weeks do they have to pick it up? Can you answer that question? Anybody? We got a pole down in the street on Dean Street, Frank, there's a pole, telephone pole in the road with a rogue clothes sign. Been up for two weeks. Is it because it's the east end of town, they don't care about it? Or nobody knows about it? Somebody's gotta know about it. We have no answers, nobody wants to talk? I guess not.
We don't respond to public comment, sorry, it's just your time to talk. We don't respond to public comment, it's just your time to talk.
We don't respond to public comments.
Not, not during public comment, we can, we can talk later. Or, or after, yeah. But you can ask a question, yep.
I have another question too.
Go ahead, you can, you, you still have time.
Uh, next time code enforcement officer has something to say to me, tell him to come to my house and say it to me personally. Don't go to my neighbors. Please, because that upsets me more. I'd like to know what he, nobody called in anything, so he just spying, I don't like that, spying. Forty-five years I've been here, you guys are gonna chase me out.
Hello, Aaron Chaffer, City of Adrian resident. Although Hispanic Heritage Month came to an end at the end of last week, we must maintain a solid support system for our Hispanic residents throughout the entire year. I have two upcoming programs to share with everyone, keeping this goal of support in mind. The first is an invitation on behalf of the Lenawee Drive Safe Coalition to join us in the Weber Center next Monday, October twenty-eighth, uh, at six P M. to seven thirty P M. for our presentation on the Drive Safe, uh, sorry, Drive Michigan Forward Initiative. Attending this presentation will be a direct way to show your support for the safety and well-being of the Hispanic community as well as the community as a whole. The second opportunity to support comes from Lead Adrian, uh, the Adrian District Library and Hospice of Lenawee. This program is a community afrenda that will be held in celebration of Day of the Dead on November second, uh, at ten A M. in the Adrian District Library. Please join us for traditional refreshments and in celebration. I have flyers too, if anyone's interested in, thanks.
Good evening, Elizabeth Perez, resident of the City of Adrian. According from Keith Miller's words, um, from the city commissioners meeting on October seventh, and I quote, "This is America, you know, we are supposed to be for everybody, not just every, it's, it's, it's not us, it's for everybody." End of quote. I would like to thank the Holy Family Parish of Adrian for something great that they are doing, for the Hispanic community. Um, so I'll be switching to Spanish. Buenas noches, este mensaje está dirigido a la comunidad hispanohablante que vive en la ciudad de Adrian y sus alrededores. De las áreas alañadas. Estimados ciudadanos mexicanos, el consulado de México concede en Detroit, Michigan, está en la ciudad de Adrian ofreciendo un servicio llamado Consulado sobre Ruedas. Este servicio comenzó a partir del día de hoy y estará aquí hasta el veinticinco de octubre. El Consulado sobre Ruedas está ubicado, eh, en el momento en la iglesia Holy Family Parish in Adrian y la dirección es trescientos cinco de la calle División. Para agendar una cita, llame al uno cuatro dos cuatro tres cero nueve cero 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 nueve o mande un mensaje por WhatsApp o visite su sitio web, miconsulado.sre.gob.mx. Gracias al padre Mike Newman y a la señora Rocío Vázquez por hacer servicios disponibles a la comunidad. Thank you.
Carol and Mar, Adrian, I would just like to know how long the city has owned this property and how much money you have made off it in that time?
Diana Faust, resident of Adrian. As you probably know, this grassroots organization offered a petition for your citizens to sign to let you know their opinion regarding your point of sale ordinance. The majority were very upset to realize that rather than to put this on the November ballot for them to vote, you chose to make this decision for them. Stating that your vote represented your constituents, even though the majority of the public comments at the two open meetings were against this. Please keep in mind that you may think the number of signatures we received is a small percentage, but a quick Google search will remind you and anyone else interested that it is more signatures or votes than you received to win your seat as a commissioner. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment inside the chambers, we will now open it up to the Zoom participants. You will see the time on your screen.
Uh, Ken Tokars, Adrian, Michigan, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm calling about, you guys just finished up, uh, one of them was the church street projects and a bunch of paving projects. Uh, you guys know I'm against special assessment districts, but I want to keep you guys updated on a couple of things in your contract. One, the contractor was supposed to be done with the work on August thirty-first and you had a note in there for five hundred days, five hundred dollars a day. So doing the simple math, over sixty days, which I now consider them to be substantially complete as I just completed Park Street, that at sixty days, that comes out to about three hundred thousand dollars. And I'd like to see the city either get that three hundred thousand dollars from the contractor. And if the city is not gonna get that three hundred thousand dollars from the contractor, that the city picks up that three hundred thousand dollars for not getting the work done by August thirty-first and spreads it among the taxpayers so they don't have special assessment districts costs that are as much without the three hundred thousand dollars. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment, are there any commissioner comments?
Can, um, our DDA director talk about handicap parking downtown? Because I'm familiar with only one spot downtown, there might be more, or if someone else has, uh, comments related to that.
I think that would be for, probably for the city engineer to speak about, but, uh, he's not in attendance tonight. I could ask him to come to a future meeting to discuss that if you'd like.
Or at least to know, you know, in, in terms of my recollection, we got one spot downtown, uh, over by, uh, Cholner's.
There is a spot behind the building.
Well, but not on.
But you're correct, there's not one, an on-street spot on this block that I'm aware of. There's also not a curb cut, which you would need to facilitate the spot.
Uh, and then is there a plan for a telephone pole that's down?
Uh, that's first I'd heard of that, so I'll ask, uh, likewise, our city engineer tomorrow about it.
And then is it true about the five hundred dollars a day? And is that something that we need to look into?
Uh, I don't think it adds up to that number, but I think that might be thirty thousand dollars. But again, that's a city engineer question, I will ask him about it tomorrow and whether or not there's liquidated damages that are applicable in that contract. Thank you.
There's also a pole on Beecher Street that's broken in half. I can't remember the cross, I can't remember the cross street, but there's one on Beecher Street. State or Dennis. At State or Dennis, it's broken in half.
I have a little information on that, if you don't mind.
Yes, go ahead.
Go ahead.
So I just know recently we've had a couple of calls about some of these poles and it's my understanding that sometimes a pole, for example, might be owned by one utility company, but there are other utility company lines connected to it. So they apparently have to all get together to take it down. It's not something that we can do because it's not our pole, if that makes sense. So if it's not a power pole, a lot of times that takes a little bit longer because it's not considered an emergency. I'm not gonna speak for the engineering department, but it's my understanding that a lot of this is waiting on those utility companies.
And can you all too, um, answer, because I can't even remember how long, how long have we had the Whit Farm property? Do you know?
I, I do.
Cause I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know, it, it goes back obviously before the L D F A, which, uh, Jay, do you remember when that was? Yeah.
The L D F A is ten years old.
So predates that, it was there at the time Gaslight Village is, uh, was developed. And that's the only land sale that I'm aware of. Again, that was before my time, so I, I don't know what we sold the land for Gaslight Village for. But that's the only entity within the Whit Farm that's currently paying taxes. I mean, it's the only development there.
So with the poles, um, my understanding too is the city does not own these poles. And we do not have the rights nor access to take them down or fix them or replace them. So we can ask and ask and ask utilities, it's much like the, um, the railroads, we can ask the railroads companies to do things within the city limits, but it is completely up to the railroad company essentially to decide if they're going to. Much like Frontier or Consumers, we can ask them and we can badger them, which is my understanding of what, uh, some of our city staff have done for some of the poles that are broken or in need of repair. But it will be up to the utilities to make those changes.
Yeah, we, the only poles that we own are, are light poles. It, and not in every case, but in some cases we own streetlight poles. But, uh, we own zero utility poles and, and are responsible. You know, we, we do not maintain them, nor do we have any ability to work on the lines that are on them, which is the thing that's the impediment to putting them back up.
May I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned.